We're glad you're all here, if you will bow with me for just a moment. We give thanks for today and are grateful for every blessing we enjoy. We acknowledge the trust our fellow citizens have placed in us and tonight we seek wisdom and guidance as we deliberate matters concerning our city. Help us to be authentic, truthful, and kind, and to always be fair and deliberative in our decisions to do what is best for Nacogdoches, the city we all so deeply cherish. Amen.
Amen.
Call a meeting to order, tonight is March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. We have no one that has signed up for open forums, so we will move to agenda items number three, to, for removal from consent agenda. I don't think, I didn't see any changes to the minutes, so if Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, if someone would like to make one.
I move, we approve consent agenda, second?
Okay, moved and seconded, if no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And moving on to our regular agenda, we are going to consider ordinance as amending, amending chapter fourteen of our buildings and building regulations. Mr. Manti? And we welcome Mr. McNeese, it's good to have you here with us too.
Good evening. I have David McNeese from Building Inspection here with me. I'll do the easy part of presenting and then he will do the hard part of answering other questions, so.
Okay.
Thought I should bring him over. So tonight we are here to adopt the twenty fifteen codes. Currently, the city runs on the two thousand and nine building codes and we believe it's about time, we also move forward with that. I believe it's one of the, one of the major things the city manager wanted me to work on when I took this position. I think last year, the fire department adopted a two thousand and fifteen fire code, so I believe it's in line that building inspection also follows use of that. Brief update on the purpose of codes, obviously to ensure public health and safety through, throughout the buildings, through the building and, I mean, after building as well. And then codes are more aligned with construction requirements and then hazardous, making sure that we use all the right materials to build and issues related to that. So basically, codes are there to ensure that buildings are built to standards for health and safety of citizens and people who inhabit those buildings. Okay. So the twenty fifteen international building codes, most of the code changes in this cycle consist of clarification and reformatting. So basically, it is not eradicating the entire two thousand and nineteen building code, it's actually trying to remove some things that might be impediments to development and trying to make sure it's well understood by developers and anybody who uses it. It also focus on ease of compliance and interpretation for the purpose of promoting life, safety, public health, protection of property, and energy efficiency of buildings. I believe in reading the code, what, one of the major terms that is very unique for, with the twenty fifteen code is the energy codes. It does well to ensure that people are building with new technology, not really technology, but new ways of building to ensure a lot of efficiency with regards to building. So we want to highlight on some of the major cost-saving changes that comes with building the twenty fifteen codes, and I'm sure most of the contractors in the city that we did have interactions with could testify to the fact that the twenty fifteen code, it's actually a good code that allows them to save costs with building. Some of these changes includes the removal of the height restriction on the pedestal or podium portions of buildings. It also includes redefining how private garages can be used in multi-family buildings and then determination of building height, area, and setbacks. The code involves a lot of stuff, but I believe not all of them applies to our city. And so the city, we wanted, at this moment, want to say thank you to our city attorney who really worked on this the whole time. We, all we did was to tell him what we wanted and he did all the work for us. And there were times when he had to let us know that there are certain things that will probably not apply to the city of Nacogdoches and we had to make sure we remove all of those extra redundant information from it. So we want to use this opportunity to thank him for his good work on this. So in looking at our city, we had adopted chapter fourteen, chapter fourteen, which is the entire building and building regulations section, Article Two, Building Code fourteen, and I think it runs from thirty-one through all the way to Article eight. So basically, we adopted the entire two thousand and fifteen code, which we believe applies to our city and we removed all of the stuff that we feel wasn't in line or was not applicable to our city. A typical example is in the twenty fifteen codes, it allowed for the creation of an air-conditioning board, and currently in Nacogdoches doesn't have such a board, and so there was no need to adopt such regulations in our code. The reason being, we don't want to create something that we currently don't have to give us any legal issues in the future. The justification for adopting the entire twenty fifteen code, we believe it will help in keeping up with and improving technology and also looking ahead to meeting changing public health and safety and resiliency needs. Cities grow, there's new innovations going on all over the world, development keep changing day in and day out, and so there's the need for our city to also keep up with new changes as they come by. And one of the greatest thing was the energy code adoption. Over the world, we have, we've been talking about climate change, the need to reduce energy usage, they need to look at efficiency in energy usage and all of those stuff, and I believe the twenty fifteen code does a good job on doing that. On November twenty eighth, the city met with contractors and citizens to explain this code and we, to answer any questions that they may, they may have, we brought a resource person to explain the changes to them. They had interesting questions and they were all satisfied with it. And this has also gone through the building and standards commission board, I believe, on two, three, three, three times and they are fully in favor of the city adopting the twenty fifteen code because it's been, it's been a while, considering the fact that we are in twenty nineteen and our code is, what we currently use is two thousand and nine code, so it's almost ten years and it's about time we made those changes to adopt the twenty fifteen codes. This will be my presentation to end, and now ten other questions to David.
First, first of all, or did you want to say something first?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to say anything about this? Because we did have a public meeting and I didn't know if anyone had come from that. Okay, if not, go right ahead, Mr. McNeese, I'm sorry.
That is correct, we did work closely with our review board. And we kind of worked through this, and we've been working on it about two years. It has been a slow process, a learning process. We've done a lot of research on it. The most important, I guess, are the, if you want to, for lack of better terms, the hickie and all this, is the energy code. It's, it's, it kind of, I guess it reminds me of the, the Energy Star homes that were built and we kind of got away from it, but now it's back. We've brought the contractors abreast with this. I personally called all of our home builders, any builder that we had here, all of our trades, electricians, air conditioning, I called them all, we had a little meeting, get together, had a gentleman come in from Longview area that is a, an inspector that would be fulfilling that portion of the energy codes. He explained to them what they will be required to do to meet the requirements for air leakage and it's, they, they really, none of them seemed concerned with what was going, because you got, you know, your electricians and the mechanical contractors, not so much the plumbing, but their license required them to follow this, this is what their license is renewed upon. And again, there's not much for the plumbing area, but I feel that we've really worked hard to get everybody abreast, the contractors that, and honestly, they just have not seemed too concerned with it. And, and we do, we have good contractors, we have great builders, they build a good home, they're going to have to do it a little extra caulking, or the insulators will, to keep these air leakages down, you know, air transitions and, so here we are, at the end of the process, to bring it to y'all to see if y'all are ready to, for us to move forward with it.
Okay, council, questions?
Sure, I've got one. Say in practice, Joe Smith wants to add on a bathroom or move some plumbing around, so he pulls plumbing permits, does that expose him then to following all those?
No, just because there's a, maybe he's going to have to do some rewiring or, like you say, just add on or remodel interior room, whatever, that type of permitting, you know, would not require him to bring the whole home up to the standard, that would be a great burden on anyone, so. As a general rule, if you're going to, let's say, you're going to hit the fifty percent, then we're going to start looking at, you know, maybe having to, we will look at that closely to see if you need to go ahead at that point and just, and it would be difficult, a real difficulty, especially if you're not opening the walls to do the things you're going to need to do.
Sure, and that's fifty percent?
Yeah, that's a general rule, fifty percent.
Construction costs, real.
That's right, and also, and it kicks in some other, other issues on commercial, the fifty percent does, so.
Okay.
Those numbers for energy consumption in your backup material were incredible, are incredible, so this is a really good thing.
And you know, and also, you know, the, the state of Texas, you know, they've passed a bill saying that if we don't do anything else, we got to do this, especially the energy code, but they have a more relaxed path to get there, spread it out over a few more years than just point blank having to do it, so.
Questions?
I'm really pleased to see how y'all worded that first paragraph and you put resiliency at the same level as public health and safety, is that intentional or is that accidental?
Well, I think I, I was doing some research on why the code in the first place, these are some of the key words that came out, out of my research, so I thought I should let the council know that all of these are some of the key words that were considered in adopting.
So resiliency is, is, is more or less on the same level as public health and safety is?
Well, in some way, we can say, public health and safety all leads into resiliency, but I, it's a key, it's a word that has been coming out in recently, resiliency, sustainability, and all of those stuff, so.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm excited to see y'all do that.
I wanted to put that out and bring it out in the open.
Mr. Belden, any questions?
After the adoption of this, the energy code applies to both commercial and residential?
Yes, please.
Okay. What about the sprinkler system, not just commercial building?
I believe sprinklers for commercial buildings, yeah.
Mr. Anderson, anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. So Chair will, is, will entertain a motion if someone would like to make one?
I'll make a motion, I will pass agenda item refined as it's written. I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number six, consider awarding contract to game time for construction of playgrounds at Pecan Park. Mr. Bray? Good evening.
Good evening, council. Mayor Brian Bray, your Director of Community Services. Sorry, I was, I was looking at the agenda and didn't realize that I was up next, I thought Steve was there and I went, oh, shoot, that's the mayor calling me, so I apologize for my delay there.
Not a problem.
Yes, ma'am, I do have the, the pleasure this evening to bring to you consideration of a contract with Game Time for construction of a playground at Pecan Park in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. We are all, everybody in this room, council and guests, are very familiar with Pecan Park. It is one of our most popular parks, it's one of the most heavily visited, it and Pioneer. It is, over the last several years, received a number of updates, not to the playgrounds, but with the Goodman Bridge addition several years ago, partnership with the county has been a wonderful area for people to come and take photographs with the local disc golf club, The Crushers, they're doing an excellent job of maintaining the disc golf course. Parks Department partnered with SFA Gardens and Garden Capital of Texas to plant over a hundred pecan trees, and so now that kind of brings to the culmination of the playground before you this evening. In two thousand and seventeen, when we were fortunate enough to have the funds to do a playground at Bonita Creek Park, we reached out to some of our surrounding communities and one of the names that kept coming back was Total Recreation Products, who we ultimately ended up signing a contract with to design the playground at Bonita, and it is still to this day, even two years later, still receiving compliments, thanks, thanks to you. So staff reached out to Total Recreation Products again and said, we, we have another playground we'd like for you to design, we came up with a list of items that we gathered from the Parks Master Plan, they were more conceptual, naturalistic playscapes, colors that don't blend with other playgrounds that we already have. One of the comments from the Bonita Creek project was Councilman Moore saying, public art, is there a way we can incorporate public art? So that was one of the items that we gave to them. So we gave Total Recreation Products a list of the types of things we'd like to see, and then now I'm going to kind of go back to this one and then I'll fast forward here. So at the top of your map there, you can see there's two play areas. Within Pecan Park, there's a section up at the front, that's what you see when you first park in the parking lot, as you see a big swing set, a couple of concrete tubes, a slide, a jungle gym. If this contract is approved this evening, we are going to leave the swings in place and the tubes in place. My daughters, I can testify, they love the tubes, I don't know how something that simple can be that popular, but it is highly popular item, and we will have two picnic tables placed in there so that parents or adult, sort of adult end, and then over on this next section, this is the section farther in, this is the area that will receive the majority of the work, and this will be focused more on the, the children end, so the adults can sit in the swings or sit at the picnic tables and be close enough to, to watch their children. There's a list of some of the items that we sent to them, presents a strong theme, we just gave as an example, logging includes naturalistic playscapes, highlights public art. And this is, this is our offices' words for this, this is kind of the hot lava approach, and this is not a technical term, and Game Time is sitting in here in Total Recreation Products, so they're probably cringing when I say hot lava, but imagine when you were a kid, or your kids, or your grandkids, and you take all the pillows off and all the cushions off in your living room and you place them down and you go hopping from one pillow to the next, to the ottoman, to the chair, and eventually what happens is you fall off, right? That's exactly what came to mind when I saw this design, because they designed something that wasn't a big giant castle, it wasn't a central playscape, it required kids to move in and out and through the play area. So in the image you see there, you can crawl across the spider web, down the rocks, hop on the toadstools, across the balance beam, over to the other rocks, I mean, you can kind of move around and hopefully not fall into the hot lava. We have some beautiful butterflies, one of the items that I also really like is the dragonfly, which is a modern seesaw, so they're not the giant two-by-sixes that we had as we were younger, younger adults. And there are some tower-type items, so that's one of them in there, but that's not the central theme, they focused more on the individual interactive type items. And there is the public art, designed by local artist Jeffy Brewer. Jeffy Brewer and Total Recreation Products made a perfect match, they reached out to Jeffy, Jeff said, absolutely, yes, I'd love to do it, and this is what he came up with. I can't testify as to how he came up with a giant bumblebee with its head stuck on the ground and two flowers down at the bottom, but Mark Macy and, Mark Macy's here, his president, Brian O'Connor, is coming, and so I was looking to see if he was here, but Mark may be able to, to give you some information as to how that part came about. So, Mayor, I am happy to answer any questions you may have after public comment, and like I said, Mark Macy is also here if you have questions of him.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? I noticed we have a, a person or two from the Parks Advisory Board, and we appreciate their work. Okay, if not, questions for Mr. Bray, comments?
I have a comment. I mean, you stated that it was heavily visited, Pecan Park. Is there a fix for the, a parking issue that's at Pecan Park? I mean, if you look at one of the Google Maps and it shows the parking lot is full, but not many participants in the park, so it's not park participants that's parking there.
Yes, sir, and that's an excellent question. I don't know if that blue line's going to show up, it's, everything south of the blue line is city property, and so if we look in that section right there where the mouse is moving, thank you, Dr. Amy, everything north of that line is SFA property. And so the majority of the parking is actually owned by SFA, and SFA has been kind over the years and designated a few of them as park patron parking, but they have the enforcement over there of who gets to park and who doesn't. There is a small parking area on the southern section, you can see there's, move on down, right?
Right in here. And that is a, that's a gravel parking lot.
And Kerry Walker and his Public Works crew do a great job of going in there and grading that, since it is gravel and it's right next to the creek, it oftentimes gets filled with water, and so after you have a heavy flow of water come over there, they go and they regrade it to, to hopefully fill in the potholes. But the short answer, Councilman, is no, I don't have a magic, magic fix to the parking. There are days that it's open and park patrons are the ones using it, and there are some days where it's full of SFA students.
So we, we not in the business of purchasing the rest of the property from SFA?
That is a, that is a council and city manager decision that I would be happy to throw to him or to you.
We'll talk to him. Thank you.
Anything else?
We're going to have one other presentation on the other park.
Yes, sir.
I've got one question, I'll save it.
I've got one then, in, in practice, I'm not sure, how would we go about enforcing that, say we paved or gravelled, some of it moving east from where the current parking lot is, I guess, south and east, that'd be right in the middle of the disc golf area, and how would we go about enforcing that, that seems pretty sticky?
I'm not sure about that one, Councilman, do you have a?
You have one.
Brace yourselves, it's the first time I've tried this. Okay, so would this be enforcement, not enforcement of SFA, but if we had our own?
Total hypothetical, if we, if we occupied some area that was somewhat out of the way, identifying that as parking for park patrons, is it practical that we could actually enforce that, or would it be overrun by well-intended students?
I don't want to say, certainly don't want to say impossibility, but it certainly could be a challenge and it, more likely than not, and I've had some recent discussions along these lines of other matters, that it might entail the addition of additional personnel, the police.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, this part is going to become more popular, you know, so there's, visitation is going to rise.
We, we can definitely, on the staff side, look at options and, and pass those along to city manager who can share those with you.
Okay, anything else? This is, this is extraordinary, I mean, this has been a couple of years and we had all those meetings with the parks and I think the company's done a great job in incorporating all of that and we have an outstanding Parks Advisory Board, as well as you and your staff, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is, this is good stuff, this is fun stuff for our committee, so thank you for that. Chair will entertain a motion for awarding the contract.
Oh, I'll make a motion, that's item number six, to approve item number six on the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we present, that we approve item number six as presented, if no further discussion, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And number seven, considering awarding a similar contract to the playground at Pioneer Park.
Yes, ma'am, this is considering awarding of a contract to Game Time for construction of a playground at Pioneer Park in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The key difference between this one and the one that you just reviewed is the funding source. This one is funded through the revolving loan fund, and I know that our city engineer, Steve Bartlett, has done an outstanding job of bringing you up to speed as to how that came about, so I will, I will save you that, that lecture again, but suffice to say that the funding is from the RLF, and we will in the next few months be bringing back a proposal to you for awarding of a contract for construction of playgrounds. So the information in your packet was just to make you aware that that was what the RLF was for, this evening is purely for the playground. Pioneer Park, much like Pecan Park, is popular. When we were doing the When we were doing the Parks Master Plan, Pecan Park was the one listed as the most popular, but then when you came to which one do you visit the most, surprisingly Pioneer was the one that popped up on the top of that list. It's also our oldest park and one that I think is quite unique because it has elevation changes. There's a beautiful creek that flows through it, which then lends itself to a phenomenal disc golf course. There's lots of similarities between Pecan and Pioneer. And this one, you know, I gave you the reference of the lava field. This one is the giant castle on the hill where you're sort of storming the castle. Another similarity between Pecan Park and this one is there's two play areas. So in this one, this is the smaller one, similar to Pecan Park, if approved, we propose to leave the swings in place but remove the other items, because the swings are perfectly fine. That way then you have a section for people who just want to go and swing. And then in this section, this would be the one that's completely redone, which would hold the giant castle. And these are the same items that we, you saw in the previous presentation for Pecan Park. And this is where we came up with the, you know, the giant castle type theme, is there's two big towers, multiple slides, slides, tube slides in particular was something that a lot of parents and kids said they really wanted. So I think Total Recreation Products did a great job of showing those here. But then you can also notice at the bottom of your screen, it's not just the castle. There's still that element of moving in and out of the play area, so you have different play zones within one, one border. You can see there, the mommy and me swings. If any of you have been over to Benita Creek Park, you can probably remember there was a waiting line. That is by far the most popular item that we could put into a park is the mommy and me swings. There's a technical term for them that I'm sure Mark could give you, but that's what everybody refers to them as, is the mommy and me. So you set the toddler in there and then you as the adult can sit there and you can swing and your child is right there in front of you. Some more angles of the same playground. And then Jeffy Brewer's art for this one is a giant deer. I believe this one is proposed to be six feet tall by five feet wide?
Four.
Four? Thank you. Four. Six tall by four wide. So, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to Pioneer Park? No? Okay, council? Questions?
Brian, you know, I remember reading in one of the council updates how y'all went and talked to a local architect and a fabricator about, you know, kind of building a unique one, and they declined to work on that for liability issues. Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
That's total, kind of a separate issue, but can you give us any more detail of what it would have required, why these people aren't worried about the liability? You know, 'cause a lot, it seems like we spend a lot of money on people that meet the criteria of liability, insurance, bonding, and that costs us a lot more money to do that. Is there any detail you can give us on why they didn't feel they could do it?
I will do my best and I'm sure that our city attorney may bail me out if I go astray. So the local architects that we visited with, and it was a couple of them, Army Curtis and Laura Culpepper, from a design side, and then we also looked at the build side. From the design side, their insurance carrier said that we are not willing, I'm not willing to insure Architect Davis for his design because it hasn't been tested. So when you have companies like Total Recreation Products, they've gone through all of the testing and their insurance carrier says, "Yes, we are gonna hold that liability for you to go and design it." And then from the building side, their, their insurance is saying, "We are gonna cover the liability of you to build it because it's already been designed and certified." So even though we could, in a hypothetical, you know, say yes, Jeff Davis, architect, has designed something that is beautiful. We all look at it and say, "It's strong as an ox and it may last a hundred years, but it may fall down next year because it didn't go through all of the same rigorous testing, similar to playground mulch." Something I learned several years ago, which just blew me away, is that you can't just use any kind of mulch, it has to be certified playground mulch. It has to have a certain diameter, it has to go through sifters, it has to be tested for compression, which is, I know that's, you're talking about design, but it's the same type of testing process. So when we looked at doing our own grinding of mulch, Kerry Walker and I said, "Man, we can save the city a lot of money, let's look into this." And we quickly realized, we couldn't, because we didn't have that certification for the mulch. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, it sort of does. Let me just expand it slightly. So I heard you say the insurance that they weren't willing to provide was related to the permanence of the structure, more so than liability, because they built a playground equipment that some lawyer somewhere would figure out to say that that's a bad, bad design and somebody got hurt and sue the city. So is it more of a inability to insurance against it not falling down or is it combined with liability about playing on, on the, on the equipment?
That's a great question that I don't know the answer to.
Good, good questions, Councilmember Moore. Let me kind of back up just a little bit and Mr. Bray did a good job of explaining it. That, let me say this, that, and I visited with some of the folks that were interested in some of the other projects and other parts, and I appreciate greatly their spirit of community, wanting to come forward and, and help. But understandably, from a business perspective, they didn't want to accept that liability. And I understand that. As a, as a small business owner in the past, I understand that. There are design components, there are testing components. This is not just lawyers arguing over dollar and cents component, there's a true safety component. Because if we think about it, we've got some of the, the most defenseless in our community out there swinging and jumping and, and we may have a very competent engineer or a very competent fabricator, but that person might not think about a sharp edge that, that a company with experience would, would think about, or a stability issue, or a breakaway issue. And so you get into some real safety issues there with these playscapes, with these playgrounds. With regard to liability and insurance matters, I think that those, like Brian said, those, those individuals that offered their services had checked into that and I don't know that that was really a viable avenue for them. With regard to these particular contracts, let me say this, that we are using our standard contracts that we now are employing with, you know, our different, well, all across the city. And built within these contracts that we're executing, if approved tonight, are components that provide for insurance coverage. And so, matter of fact, I, Mr. Bray supplied those policies from my review. I've reviewed them and issues such as proper coverage amounts, waiver of subrogation issues, named insured issues, all those things are present. And so they're able to supply those as well. Good question about bonding. We can't turn a blind eye to bonding. And I know you're not suggesting that, but there's actually statutory regulations dealing with bonding. So when we have a construction project, which this is, they're constructing these, these playscapes out there, over fifty thousand amount for one, I think under the local government code, a hundred thousand under another, that we have to have certain bonds, that if we're gonna have construction projects like that. So that's a, that's a requirement. And I could drone on forever, but I see your eyes rolling back in your heads and I'll, I'll stop now.
I mean, it, it is interesting because, you know, I, I don't think we can do it here, but it would be curious how much surcharge is in there. I mean, if a, if a bond costs, I don't know how much a bond costs, a thousand dollars and, you know, they charge five thousand dollars for that bond, you know, it's a four thousand, I don't know. All I'm saying, it would be interesting to look at, 'cause some of the contracts we've approved have seen tie for what somebody that's just a normal carpenter would build that same thing for. That's all I'm saying.
There, there's no doubt, you know, when, you do, you do pay for that protection.
Yeah.
You do pay for that expertise.
Absolutely.
There are some issues such as bonding that we couldn't, that we would have to have, and these are two projects, we'd have to have those bonds on. So whether it was, whether it was a company not located in Nacogdoches or a local that wanted to volunteer for this, it would require a bond.
And is that bond permanent? I mean, is it, how long does it last for?
Well, you have, actually, these bonds are payment and performance bond. And so they're essentially, the bonding, that's essentially for...
Until it's, the construction is approved.
Right, right.
Okay.
And then, and then with regard to the finished product, then that's picked up with the risk pool, with our, our insurance is addressed with that as a property issue.
For the liability case, if a child got hurt, that would be our liability, city's liability?
Well, it would depend, it's a, it's a lawyer's answer for you there, Councilmember Moore, it depends.
Okay.
So, you know, there, there's a whole universe of options there.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Question? Okay. So, Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we passage in, item number seven as it's written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
This is huge. I mean, this is just such an enhancement. I mean, it's great for the kids and the parents, but this has been a few years you've been working on this.
This, this summer, we're gonna see a lot of changes, thanks to, thanks to you and the rest of the council with Maroni and Pioneer and Pecan.
It's gonna be a great year, very, very exciting. Thank you so much. Number eight, consider approval of two thousand nineteen street improvement project report in the slated streets proposed for repair. Good evening, Mr. Bartlett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And Mr. Bray, I now know where all my culvert pipes are disappearing to. I've been trying to figure that out, so, you know, it's, we'll talk later. So tonight we have for you, I guess, I wanna go through a little discussion on our street improvement program. This is something we now do annually for you, and last year was the first report for that. And so we'll be doing this annually in the end of the third quarter each year. Some of you were here last year and we kind of went through paving our lecture and some of you weren't. So I have extracted a few of those slides to kind of bring a few of you up to date, so the others be patient with me just a little bit as we go through some of this. So I guess I'll use this. So, which one button here, I'm sorry? Red one? Thank you. Okay, we, we maintain a pavement management system and we have since nineteen ninety-two, and I was fortunate enough as a consulting engineer to be able to start that and operate that with the city. So I've been involved in it since that period of time. We basically keep a complete inventory of every street, and that's all the good engineering stuff like links and widths and what the pavement material is and the curbs and conditions and cracks. And that's all in basically a large database or spreadsheet. Every five years now, we go back and reevaluate every single street, one hundred and forty-four miles of streets. We drive them, we walk them, we touch them, we update our status of their condition and any things that is of notable items to report in our management system. We grade each street. We used to grade them numerically, one through a hundred, and that became a little arduous. We had a lot of streets that graded seventy-six and how do you pick one over another? And we've simplified that over time with your standard school-type grading, A through F. So we can bundle streets that are poor and bundle streets that are really good that we don't need to look at, and it's kind of simplified it. And I will tell you, in the office, we probably have some C minuses and some D pluses, so we may fine grade that a little bit. But it's important to know, we've kind of simplified that. We develop repair schemes for each and every one of those streets, except the A and B streets that don't need attention now. And then we price those with cost estimates, so we know this is a million-dollar street and this is a thousand-dollar street. Each year, though, as we look at a bundle of streets we want to repair and bring to you, like we have, like we're going to do this year, we review those particular streets so we don't wait every five years, we go back and look at them, 'cause conditions change and we can't be on every street all the time. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not getting it. There we go. I think I skipped one. So real quick, I wanna review what, how we grade the streets, just so you kind of have a feeling for what we look at. It is subjective and a little fuzzy, but it's okay and it works. Grade A streets or A streets are just recently paved, they're just in excellent condition. We assume they've got fifteen or easily sometimes twenty years of life left before we have a whole lot of things to do. There's really no potholes, no cracks, nowhere. We don't have a lot of those streets, so, but the ones we just finished paving are A streets. B streets are still very, very good-conditioned streets, and they're streets that have almost no potholes, almost nowhere, just a few cracks. You can see one kind of in the middle of the streets while we took a picture of it. But basically, it's a street we're not paying a whole lot of attention to at this point, other than unless we find a pothole or get a phone call. The grade C streets are our vast majority of streets in town, that's what they fall in this category. Some are C minuses, some maybe C pluses, but they're starting to show some wear. They have some potholes, some maybe mild to moderate cracking going on. We see evidence of traffic, we see evidence of water wear around the inlets. So they're starting to see it, but we think they may have three to five or even more life left. But we're starting to spend some maintenance time out there. During the year, we're in and out doing potholes and various, various other things. All of these have some level of maintenance that's required. These streets are just below-average streets and they're really getting to be in bad condition. They may have one to three years worth of life left and that could be debated by some. There's moderate potholes, severe cracking, we've had lots of patches and repairs, and these are the streets that you and I both get calls on. These are the ones generally that are coming in. There's a lot of evidence of prior work. We have different conditions, real quick to note, the lower right-hand corner picture is a street that's just so old, it started to gravel out. It's the ones where you drive over and it sounds crunchy, the rock is coming out of the asphalt matrix and it's just worn out and brittle. The one on the lower left is also worn out, but it's, the crack has intersected a crack, this intersected a crack, and we call it alligator cracking, and that's 'cause it looks like an alligator's back. And both of those are streets that are just really getting to be in poor condition. Grade F streets, and hopefully we don't have hardly any of any of those left, we've been attacking those, are streets that are absolutely horrible. We all get calls on them. I'm not sure there's any pavement left that isn't a patch when we do it. In some cases, you can see there's no pavement at all. So these streets are just something that's always a first priority to attack when funds are available. Also to remind you, as you get calls from folks in your ward or citizens that you meet in the parking lot at the grocery store, not all streets are ours. We have one hundred and forty-four miles of streets in the city, but mostly arterial corridors are maintained by text dot. So you say, "Well, we realize the loop is text dot and we know North Street is text dot." But what you may not realize is streets like Shawnee, streets like part of Rayburn, streets like Durst are actually also text dot streets. So when we get a call, or a call from you, or a call from a citizen, "We've got a pothole in Austin Street," and the public doesn't always know, so we take the information on the pothole, the location, we contact text dot and notify them of where there's a repair needed. We also give the citizen contact information for text dot so they can follow up with it. So we try to help, even though it's not our streets, and handle these citizens. We don't ever say, "That's not our street," go away. So I want you to know that's how we handle it. But as you get these calls, realize a bunch of those streets, and also including SFA streets, are not ours. A lot of times we'll get a call, "My street is in horrible condition," and what we find out when we go out is that their street is a bit ugly. So the, the picture in the upper right is a street that's being crack sealed and seal-coated and it's starting to wear, the colors are starting to wear through on the rock and, but it's actually still structurally sound and probably has a little bit of good life to it. And we may be fixing a pothole or two. The street on the bottom, however, is again cracked up. Both streets are ugly, but one is in bad condition and one is actually in fair condition. So when we go out, we evaluate. So you may hear, "Well, we responded, well, you didn't pave our street," and it may just be because it's in the ugly street stage and, and we're kind of deferring that for a few years. So, go back real quick of what, and we issued you, I think, a copy of our annual paving reports, and in that report, we talked about things that we did last year in two thousand eighteen. We basically issued three contracts last year and we came to you with each contract and kind of updated you, but we had a contract where we, contract one, where we sealed cracks. We literally just sealed cracks with the black worms, you see. Contract number two came back on those streets and did a surface seal coat, that's where they spray an oil mixture and put rock on it, and we did about twenty-seven streets that way. So we got lots of miles of streets, about six-point-three miles of streets done with that crack seal and seal coat. That is something that we do on those C streets, not on D streets and F streets, but we are able to take a C street and save it for, for years. We have evidence of streets here that were put in in the early seventies, have never been overlaid, but we've done a couple of crack seal, seal coat sequences and we've managed to save them. And that works real well on lower-volume residential, it's not gonna work as well on an arterial. But it's a technique we use, so we're trying to get to the point where every other year or third year, we can maybe do these seal coats and save some of these C streets. So I want you to know it's a target. It's what we did last year and it was highly successful. In the report that we gave to you, there was a sheet in there that I'll just call In the report that we gave to you, there was a sheet in there that I'll just call a report card. So, we show you now, we'll show you this every year going forward, is what we told you we would do, what was proposed, what we actually got accomplished. So, you can see if we were able to get all the streets done or not. Maybe it was budget, maybe it was something in the way. We were able to achieve everything that we told you last year we would do with a couple of extra streets added. We were able to do a little extra crack sealing. We had some material left over and some budget, and we kind of extended the run on it. With the exception of an intersection repair at Fredonia in MLK, and that's right there, Texas Farm Products entrance. And that was because they were proposing some new driveways and concrete work, and we decided we needed to come in after them. So, we delayed that project for a year, but we still intend it. So, everything else we were able to achieve, including some additional stuff. We spent a little over a million dollars last year, and I think we've got a lot of, a lot of mileage out of what we did. So, we're really pleased with that. That was both for the seal coat, crack seal scenario. And then, we also spent your street maintenance fee. We had a contract number three where we did some major overlay and paving with that, not the seal coat stuff. And we, now, remember, we keep those funds separate, and so, these were separate projects that we did. So, we had several large fixes. Richie Street's a good example of one that's, that just came out really well, that we did an overlay on. Get this next. Okay, so, the streets that we are going to propose for you this year are going to have some repair schemes. They're more major repairs, and we provided you some pictures, and we'll show you in a minute. But we'll be doing patching. Again, patching is a big version of a pothole. So, we saw it out, moved the asphalt, we tried to deal with the base material. Sometimes, we cut it out, most of the time, we can recompact it, put new asphalt in, and we have a nice kind of square patch. And we do that so that when we come in with whatever we put on the surface, we have a good, stable spot there. We always have ruts that we need to do level up in. Usually, those are over our utility corridors, because remember, most of our water and sewer lines are in the street. So, they tend to settle a little bit. If we feel like they have finished settling, and it's a judgment call, then we will do a level up, so that when our new surface comes in, it doesn't reflect or mirror that dip. If we think it's continuing to settle, we literally dig it out and do something much more structural to it. So, it's a judgment. But these, but level up will be part of what we do to fill those depressed areas. Asphalt overlays are our common repair in a major, in a major street rehab. That's where we put about two inches of asphalt or more sometimes over an existing pavement, usually asphalt, but sometimes concrete. And we have to treat the concrete with some things to keep reflective cracking from the concrete coming through. But generally, it can go in either one. The nice thing about this is we can easily put traffic on it, hopefully, at the end of that day, or worst case, the next day. So, it depends on the temperature when we laid it. You'll hear us use the terms mill and inlay, and that's where a street already has an overlay on it. We've already overlaid it once. We may have three or four or five inches of hot mix asphalt on there. But it's starting to wear and crack up, and what we want to do is come in and mill off a couple inches and put back a couple inches in it. So, we're going to be back to the same elevation that we were, but we've got a new road surface in there, and we still have the structural base beneath it that we kept. So, and again, this is pretty much only used when we already have an overlay on a street. And of course, our favorite is to recycle a street. A number of years ago, you helped us purchase a, a remixer like this, a pulver mixer like this, and the zipper, it was called. And this is a picture of our zipper on MLK. So, this is actually not some canned picture. And what you can see is it produces that material. It takes the asphalt and the base, however deep we grind it, mixes it up into literally a fine material. We put it back down. We can treat it chemically with lime or cement or an oil emulsion if we want to. And then, we put a new asphalt surface on top of it. This is probably our best street rehab that we have. And one of the reasons we love it the most is especially in a residential street, for example, we can allow traffic to continue. So, when we go home at night, they can drive on that gravel mix and get in their driveways, and they're a lot happier with us when we do that. So, as opposed to the old version, before we did this, we would literally tear that street out and haul it to the landfill and have a bunch of mud. It looks like what Austin Street does right now. And then, bring a street back in. It was never a popular. So, we usually avoided it. We usually did a lot more overlays and just hoped that it'd last. This has given us a chance to rebuild streets that we think probably will get well over 20 years of lifestyle. So, let's talk about the streets that we're proposing for you tonight. Be Sir Gawain, Sir Galahad, Friar Tuck, Chevy Chase, Lake Street and Hillview, and then Pearl Street. All the streets except for Pearl, we're proposing to fund under the General Fund Capital Improvement Program. So, it'd be in our normal budget. Pearl Street, we'd like to designate from the street maintenance fee. So, we have about $340,000 worth of streets that we're going to bring out of the CIP, pay for out of CIP fund, and $253,000 that we think for the first phase of Pearl. And this is the southern portion of Pearl from, from Mueller Street up to...
Ellington.
Ellington, thank you. Ellington. I keep him there for a reason. So, thank you. As you can see, we've got about $341,000 budget in the general fund, so we're right scooching there. And these are early estimates for us. And we've got about $273,000 in the street maintenance fund available. So, these are the projects that we have proposed. You can see they range from northeast all the way to southwest as we found, again, streets that we thought were, were high needs. So, we cross. And we don't do these by ward. We don't come and try to do two in years, and two in years, and two in years. We, we do them where we think our highest needs are, and this is just how they distribute. Let me show you real quick. Sir Gawain is a patch and overlay. It is a street that's probably C minus, D plus. It's, but it's okay enough that we think we can just patch it and do an overlay. But it is definitely needing some attention. Sir Galahad, as you can see, is just cracked. That's one big alligator right there in the street. So, it is gone. And we don't feel like there's enough structure there to just overlay it. So, we're going to pulver mix that or remix that and recycle that structure. Same thing for Friar Tuck and Chevy Chase, all of them in similar condition where they are just in pieces. Hillview and Lake Street also had very, very similar look to it. So... And then, lastly, Pearl Street, which has lots of bad spots and a little bit of good pavement in between. And so, you can see there's some crack derrys and some decent pavement there, but it has an overlay on it. So, it'll be our mill and inlay candidate, where we'll mill all that off and put a new surface on that. So... We showed you this last year. I know we've had some talks as we've raved about GIS and all our things we do. But I wanted to remind you, every pothole that's patched during the year, coordinates are obtained, GIS, GPS coordinates are obtained, and it's uploaded to the mothership, and we keep all that into our GIS system. And so, there's lots of little black dots on there that I can't see unless the map's real big. But then, we do a heat map, which is nothing but density. So, the red is higher density, and the blue is low density. And the red tells us where we're making lots of potholes, and where we're patching lots of potholes. So, we use this as one of the tools to confirm that we think these streets are bad. But looky here, we're doing lots of pothole repair. We're spending a lot of money repairing these streets continuously. So, we use this as kind of a confirmatory check for us in which streets that we're picking. So, it's just a tool. It's great, and remarkably, almost all of our streets are, are in those red areas, some in, in the orange, which is just almost fixing to turn red. So, it generally backs up what we're trying to do. So... Got a new section I want to talk to you about tonight, and we'll include this every year from now on, if you wish. But we always want to know some metric for how are we doing, what's our success with our maintenance? So, if I told you we were going to spend $1,000 this year fixing streets, everybody would say, Steve, that just can't be enough. And if I told you I wanted to spend 10 million, the city manager would tell me that's way too much. And so, what, what is the number? Well, it's hard, and it's fuzzy, and it's different, and it varies with the kind of rehab that we're doing. But we want to kind of introduce a concept to you to give you a metric of, of success for what we're doing. So, if each annual budget cycle, we have 144 miles of street in the city, and we age one year between budget cycles, then we would have to do 144-mile years, if you can kind of let me bind those together. Well, we don't add one year of life to a street when we do it. We add 10 or 15 or 20 years of life. So, if we had two miles of streets we paved in a program, and we added 15 years of life, then we would add 30-mile years. So, that's the metric I'd like you to kind of be thinking about. So, what we're proposing is that in order to be at even, after a year, we need to have 144-mile years done each season to just break even with what we've aged over a year. So, how did we do last year? Well, we did 6.3 miles of seal coats, but we added maybe a 10-year life. And understand, we are using some recognized but maybe conservative values for life. Are we going to get 12 or 15 years out of some of those? Yes, we, we are. So, but understand, we're trying to do comparison to see if we're even in the slot. So, we can argue the nuances of years of life, and it's going to depend on wheelloads and traffic and where you are. So, we did seal coat streets, we did some patch and overlay, we did some milling overlay and some remix last year. And we added, we estimate, about 91-mile years. Again, our target was 144. You know, maybe some of those streets are going to last longer, and we added 105-mile years. But the point is, we think we fell short of the 144, even with that project. What we're proposing to you is more expensive cost per mile streets this year, because these are major rehabs. Whereas, the other is a very economical way to do street savings. And so, we're going to spend a little bit more per mile to do these streets. And so, the net result is, we think we're only going to be adding about 36, 37-mile years. So, again, we're falling a little short of what's our new metric. So, to put it in perspective, in 2018, we spent about $11,600, $11,700 for every mile year that we added. That's what it costs to do that kind of street rehab when we mixed last year's project. In 2019, we're going to be spending about $16,000 per mile year, because we're doing a more expensive rehab scheme with these milling inlays and overlays. But in last year's project scheme, we would have had to issue about $1.7 million in contracts to get to that 144. So, the point is, we, there was more funds needed to, to achieve what we think was there. The same thing for this year. I think we'd be well over $2 million in order to achieve the 144 in this overlay-inlay kind of scenario and remix that, that we're doing. So, wanted to give you, again, these, this isn't an exact science, but it's starting to give all of us a feeling. What it's showing is that we're going to have to be somewhere between maybe $1.7 and $2.2 million when we spend money to try to break even. So, what does it mean if we don't make 144? It means we're deferring our maintenance. So, does the world fall apart? No. But the street starts to after years. So, we're, we're trying to catch up. We would have to do more than the 144. So, this is just so all of us have some kind of rule of thumb of where we are and, and, and what we're doing. And we thought it was an interesting way to look at it. And so, if you like it, we'll be bar graphing these each year in the future in this report and kind of growing this, so we can see all the years prior when, when we do it. So... Mayor, after questions from the public, comments, I'll be happy to answer y'all's questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to comment on our street repair and this proposed plan? No? Counsel, questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you so much for doing that more detailed analysis and taking track and all that. It's really important to do that, because over time, we'll see where we are. Some of those streets, like Friar Tuck and Sir, I mean, just by the names, I'm assuming they're kind of in the same area?
Sir Galahad and Sir Gawain are up northeast, and they're adjacent to each other. Friar Tuck is across the loop.
Okay.
So, it's not necessarily adjacent to it. Hill, Crest, and Lake, Case's Lake, yeah, are adjacent to each other.
I guess where I'm going is, have y'all identified any characteristic or cause why one street begins to fail quicker than another street? Is it the construction materials? Is it the base? Is it traffic? Is it age?
And, and the answer is yes and yes. Those streets, some of our streets were built by developers. Some of our streets, a lot of our streets, were built by city crews. In the old days, city would build streets, and a developer would reimburse that. And I don't know the details of those deals. But what, what we find is the streets that we have a, a text dot grade limestone base and an asphalt have a longer lifespan and less failures, and the streets that have three inches of iron ore gravel from a creek bottom are the ones that fail earlier. Now, that is often weighted by traffic volume, and as you well know, you know. So, this is, you know, I've always said, there's not a bad street design, and I'm being silly, but there's not a bad street design, but you get what you pay for in streets. So, if you build a thin street, we're going to replace that street in a few years. If you build a airport for a street, airport runway for a street, we're going to replace it in a lot of years. So, the more money you invest in your street, the longer lifespan you get. But we've seen some areas of town, the subgrade, and this is the material under the base rock, is a highly-plastic clay or moderately-plastic clay for this area, was never treated with lime, was never stabilized. And over time, that, you know, affects a failure with, with moisture. So, that's been our common failure combined with inadequate base material depths and a base material that was really, what, what you guys see is a red sand with a little buckshot iron ore in it, is our base. And that can only handle so many wheel reps before it fails. So, those are the two common failure mechanisms. We see those with limestone base are really shining and lasting longer.
And so, the streets that are getting built, you're comfortable with the street specifications?
Yes, and I think it's always a balance of expenditures and, and quality. But our basic street standard's a type A grade one or two crushed limestone. So, we're using text dot grade quality limestone from the plant. And then, we're using a minimum two-inch hot mix. And then, we are requiring subgrade stabilization, chemical stabilization with lime typically, or cement. We've done some cement ones, depending on the plasticity index of the subgrade.
Okay. And when you do the, the last question, when you do all these repairs that you create your hot map from, are you documenting the, the subgrade and everything at that point, so you'll have a sense? No?
No, sir. The, the patch repair crew is documenting the pothole. And they're not...
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
I will say, can I add? I'm sorry, I will say, part of what we do, and Case and I spent this afternoon planning locations, we also do cores. So, we'll be doing some cores of these streets before we do it to make sure, A, we're not remixing below the base material. And we know that if the base material's the iron ore material, we may do some stabilization of it. Or if it's highly-plastic, we may use lime in the remix. So, so, we, we do some cores to tell us that before we go into a rehab mode to answer your question.
Thank you.
Think MLK, while I go, there's other questions I'm going to ask. A street that goes from a C to a D or F, is that because of deferred maintenance? How do, how we let it go to that level without repairing it?
Well, there, we, we have more streets deteriorating than we have money to fix, is the simple answer to your question. These streets, in some cases, snuck up on us. We had a very, very wet season, as, as everybody knows. And so, we have streets where you're opened up cracks, and these streets had open cracks, but they might have been C minus cracks, quickly turned into D cracks because that, we had so much rain. So... That also, we also see that, and MLK is a good example in the industrial side of MLK, the, the west side, where we have trucks all day long. And one truck, one 18-wheeler loaded, can be the equivalent of over 18,000 passenger vehicles. And it's, there's fuzzy numbers there, depending on the weights and loads. But I want you to understand what the huge impact is of truck traffic. So, truck traffic's a big component, and then, total vehicles per day, and then, there are, it's another.
Do we have the funds available for that MLK? I mean, the CIP or the maintenance fee fund? Has that already been approved?
Well, the, what we're proposing to you tonight is to spend the maintenance fee fund on Pearl.
Okay. No, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I really like your KPI, the mile years. That's super helpful.
Thank you.
For Aggies that...
Thank you.
Simple things.
Well, and it gave us, I mean, we're, we do a lot of this, honestly, in paving, and use our judgment. And that kind of helped us know where we were. And so, for, for Case and I, was a very helpful metric.
That's good. Anything else? Thank you very much. Can this be done with a, a motion, or do we need two motions, since it's two separate funds? One's the general fund for street repair, and one's the street maintenance fund?
One motion is adequate.
Three quarters of it in each. It's all one? Okay. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion. We approve item agenda number eight.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in seconded, that we consider agenda item number eight as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Agenda item number nine, receive Recreation Department Annual Report. Ms. Schmidt, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Counsel. Mayor, it's good to see all of you. I am Vicki. I'm the Recreation Superintendent. And before I get into my report, Mayor, I wanted to, on behalf of our Leadership Nacogdoches class, I want to say thank you for coming in and talking with us. It was great to hear your background, and I do have a couple of my classmates here tonight. One had to jet out for another meeting, but we wanted to say a big thank you from our class, because it was great to hear your, hear your story. So, anyways, I'm here to do the recreation report, the annual, the annual report. And I am going to be much like him. Okay, great. So, our big thing this year is we are, our gymnastics program is partnering with the Boys and Girls Club this year. And we're really excited about this, because we think, we feel, we know it is going to be able to offer more classes, more instructors for more age groups. So, our intermediate and advanced classes, which is our older classes, are actually, after this spring session, we are going to graduate them into the Boys and Girls Club, where they have a bigger facility that can handle the higher levels, which is giving us the opportunity to expand our younger program. So, we're going to be able to take those adult and top classes and make more of them, or the developmental classes, and be able to break them up more by their ages, their abilities. Anyhow, we're really excited about it. We're excited to be able to partner with the Boys and Girls Club and have that good working relationship with them. So, that's our gymnastics program. We're very excited for it. This year, we wanted to let you know our gym usage, which most of you know is $2 a day or $20 for the month. And kids can come in with an adult for ages 12 and under, 13 or over, they can come in by themselves. We've noticed that our gym usage is down a little bit this year. We don't really have a good answer as to why. It could be promotion of it. It could be people moving away, using other facilities as more fitness facilities open. It could be a variety of reasons. I don't go and seek those patrons and ask them why. It could be a variety of reasons. I don't go and seek those patrons and ask them why. But we do have our most popular night, which is our 18 and overnight. It's a very competitive basketball night if you ever want to come see some of the guys that are super intense about basketball. They enjoy getting together and playing. We also have started our gymnastics open gyms every other Friday night, and that has become very popular, especially when the weather is bad. Obviously, people want to get their kids indoors. Some of it is when weather is like this, they're out in the parks, which is awesome. If it's raining or it's cold or whatever, they come in and see us. So that's wonderful for us. These are some of our recreation classes, majority of them. And the two at the bottom, you can see they're kind of bolded there for you. We just added those this year and we are amazed at how well they are doing. So it's our Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and our beginner bar and yoga class, very popular. We're excited to hopefully be able to keep them in our facility. The Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu is growing immensely, which is awesome. Space wise, not as awesome as they have to shift rooms so that way when their classes are bigger, they have a bigger space. But you can see, most of our classes are ongoing and we've had them for years and they're doing well. We are working on promotion of them so that way we can grow some of those smaller programs to become bigger programs. Let's see, special events. This year, Kid Fish. I don't know if any of you were able to come out to Kid Fish this year, but we had the biggest year we've had since I've been here with 279 registered participants. So when you add, and they have to be ages one to 16. So then you add in their parents and all that. So we probably had about 500 people out at Lakeside Park. It was awesome. Corporate Challenge, it is coming up this April. And I actually asked Mr. Roy if he had signed up for his events, and he has. So we invite all of you to sign up for something and play. Or sign up with your businesses and play in Corporate Challenge. It's a good time to get out and meet everybody, meet people that work at E-Tech and Eaton and CBTX, which, I mean, it's wonderful. It's so much fun. So if you haven't done it, you should do it. Summer camp and winter camp, we do those every year. This year for winter camp, it grew, which was exciting for us. As last year, we had about seven participants. This year, we had 12. So that's growing. It's growing slowly, but I will take growing over decreasing. Sports, lots of sports. So we have two seasons of youth volleyball, one season of youth basketball, three seasons of adult softball, two seasons of adult indoor footsall. So it's like, think indoor soccer. And then two seasons of outdoor adult soccer. So I gave you kind of the participants and how it kind of breaks down by sport and then a total adult participation and a total youth participation. I'm sure a question that will come up is, are they repeat customers? Yes. Every sport has repeat customers. That's what they enjoy doing. But I couldn't give you an exact breakdown of which teams and which individuals on each team come back every season as some rotate through. I also wanted to give you a small, I like to research things in recreation so I can see where we are in our recreation programs and see what's popular throughout the country. This comes from the Fitness Trends of 2018, put on, it was an article done by the American College of Sports Medicine. And these are the top four trends and activities. So HIIT classes, your high intensity interval training, their short bursts of high intensity, typically about 30-minute workouts. I enjoy them. That's what I like to do. Then you have your group training, which is a lot of the classes that we put on. So your Zumba, your Zumbini, all those. Wearable technology, I don't know how many of you wear your Fitbits or whatever I do. It keeps me moving. But that one's a very popular one. It actually moved from two to three from 2017 to 2018. And then any body weight training. So if you ever go out to Clint Dempsey Soccer Complex and you know that's got the trail around it, that could be considered that because people can do lunges, they can do anything that doesn't require equipment necessarily. So it's a no weights and a low cost. And lastly, our revenue for our fiscal year 2017-18 was 224,306, which is an increase from 1617, which was 204,573, which of course, for me, is very exciting. I love to see that my programs are growing and I like recreation. So, there you go.
Okay. That was a great presentation. Is there anyone that would like to comment on it? Okay. We are so fortunate to have a recreation center. I just, with all these programs, I don't know how you keep up with it all. Does counsel have any questions or comments? Come on, you want to say something?
I was just going to ask if the city manager is going to provide rubbing alcohol after I finish my event.
Okay, we will make a special request for that. Okay.
Could you touch on the summer programs?
Sure. So we do a seven-week summer camp. And we limit ours to 24 kids in our camp. We do ages five to eight. We break them up five to eight and nine to 12. And the reason that we do that is because your 12-year-olds are much more advanced than your five-year-olds. So we don't necessarily want them to do the same activities together. We typically break them apart so that way they can do things more age oriented. Each week has a different theme. And us in the library kind of collaborate so that way with our programs that they offer on Tuesdays, with the big community events, often our themes are all the same. So it's fun so that our kids can go to that. Anyhow, you can sign your kid up just for one week or you can sign them up for the whole summer. And we don't leave like the recreation center, we don't go on field trips. But we do go outside to the last leadership NAC class that did the, I'm sorry, I don't know what it, Bugs, Bees and Butterfly? Yes. They did that out front. And so the kids get to go out there and they're able to climb on that and play on that. And they get to eat their popsicles out there, that kind of stuff.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's really fun.
We've got an eight-and-a-half-year-old and I'd imagine he would be thrilled to do that.
Absolutely. And the themes this summer are going to be great. So.
Cool. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Appreciate it. Executive session tonight?
No, ma'am.
No? Then thank you all for attending and that concludes tonight's meeting.